New shop, everybody's out everywhere around me.
Nice tie, sir.
Thank you.
Next month, you have power.
Good morning, Commissioner Ed Rothstein, Thursday, July 14th. I think we have a relatively full agenda, but we're going to get through it. As always, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, let's jump right into, prior to Carol, I think I know what's on a lot of our minds, but let's start with Commissioner Wance.
Really?
Commissioners?
What?
I'll not be able to show any pictures. I'm down in the control room.
Okay. I think Commissioner Wance can share his views on what's going on without pictures.
Right.
My whole presentation was about pictures.
It was all about photos, but whatever, yeah. Okay, obviously, as you say, the storm's on everybody's minds, still in the cleanup mode. Want to give a huge shout out to all the first responders. They did an amazing job. Certainly our DPW folks that were out there, and they're still out there. I came up a couple of roads into here this morning to see what they were like, and still battle zones everywhere. So it's, I've got a lot of roads in my district that are just one lane. So I want to remind folks to be patient. We're getting to as many as they can. And I don't even know what to say about BGE. I think I'll just let that go. They've got a lot of issues, not only here, but I know Harford County was hit pretty hard, too. I talked to Barry Glassman last night briefly, and they've got a lot of issues up there, too. But we got a lot of folks that are still out, and I suspect will be out for a while. And so our emergency management is here if you need assistance. The Red Cross reached out. I hooked them up with Valerie Hawkins last evening. So we've got all the resources. So if you're in a jam, certainly get ahold of emergency management folks here, and we'll see where it goes. Hopefully, we'll get out of this thing soon. I'm one of those folks. Day three of no power. So that's the way, you know, it's the way we're rolling right now. So working together, we'll get out of this. A couple of quick things for me. I had the opportunity on Tuesday to go down to meet with Oscar Baker in Mount Airy. As many of you know, Oscar turned 100 a couple weeks ago. Oscar, without a whole lot of, saying a whole lot more about Oscar, I mean, he was instrumental in, in creating a lot of the things that we are seeing now in the fire and EMS here in the county. He was past president of the association, past president of the State Firemen's Association. And I got to tell you, Oscar is sharp as a tack. He was, he was throwing out names, and he had Director Mike Robinson back in his chair a little bit because he was throwing names out from Mike's previous employments in Anarundel and Baltimore. And it's unbelievable how amazing Oscar is with all of that. So all that, we're back. So there we are. That was at Lorian down in Mount Airy on Tuesday. That's some of the Baker family there with Mike Robinson and I. But Oscar is an amazing individual, and he's got a, I'm going to get this wrong. I think he's got a nephew who's 95, and his wife is 96. So I don't know what's in the water in Mount Airy, but it's interesting. And another fact that folks don't know about Oscar is he was the one that started that senior assisted living area in Mount Airy. He was the first house in that area, and then it grew from there to the fact that they now have Lorian, where you can move out of your house and right into Lorian on the same property. So anyway, it was a great experience, and I can't say enough about Oscar Baker and the Baker family.
One day, when you're 100, you'll be honored like that as well, and you'll be just as sharp.
Yeah, right. I don't know about that, but it is amazing. So that and the community center up in Silver Run is moving right along. It's interesting to see steel in the air up there. If you've been by, if you've been by that area on 97, it's sat empty for so long, and now when you go by, you're like, whoa, wait a minute. So I stopped in, talked to the contractors yesterday. Man, they're moving quick. So that's going to be a great facility, and we look forward to what that brings to that area up there. And then, I don't know if anybody else has this, but we are again the lowest, we have the lowest unemployment ranking in the state. We're at 2.8, tied with Queen Anne's. And we finally beat Howard. Did you see that, Ed?
I did.
Calvin Ball's always yapping about, you know, well, we're right there with you. Well, we beat him, you know, so anyway.
Speaking eloquently is what you're saying.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a competition. We're winning.
Anyway, that's it for me. Everyone just have patience. And again, from all of us, thank you to everybody that was out in amongst all of this. The sheriff's sitting here, and I know his group was out big time. Our 911 operators, our fire and EMS handled hundreds of calls. So once again, we weathered the storm, if you will. So a little bit more to go, but thank you to everybody that was out there and continues to be out there to make sure we're safe. So that's enough said on that.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Well, I just want to say something else about that. Just tremendous cleanup job in Carroll County, it really is, and not just the county municipalities as well, because they were all hit. And they've done, they've done a really, really good job. And I'll leave it at that since we just talked about it for a while. We had the ribbon cutting for Veterans Memorial Park. I don't know if we're going to have any pictures. I think not. I'm not sure what's going to happen with that. But it's a, I think it's 33-acre park. It's a gem down there. It really is. And I remember a few years ago, going to one of the community meetings, and there were people that, as with everything comes up, people didn't want people to pose, the people to worry about. And all the concerns were put out there. And it was, what happened was, there was open communication between our Parks and Rec Department and the communities, and things got moved forward because of that. And it's just, when you actually talk to people and find out what the concerns are and how we can best handle them, things move forward. So now you got this really, really nice park down here. I'm glad it's open. There's going to be some additions to that park coming up in the future. And this is a passive park. There's a nice walking trail. There's open fields. There's a, I guess you call it a playground. I don't know what they call it nowadays, because it's not like it used to be. But anyway, playground and that kind of, whatever they call it now. And so it was really nice. And all the commissioners were there, and someone from Mr. Carden's office was there. I don't have her name in front of me, so I apologize, but was there as well. So it was really nice ribbon cutting. And there were veterans there as well. So it was a nice ceremony. Also, was at the opioid prevention coalition meeting. It was virtual. They basically, it was just a year-end summary of things that they have accomplished, the grants and all that they have received. And they were very, very appreciative of how we used our Not in Carol money for the rapid response, trans, can't even think of the name of it now. And I had it written down, but I crossed it off. And also for the after-school programs. We use the money for those two things, and they were very appreciative because they're looking to prevent opioid addiction and just not just opioids, but other drugs as well. And they highly recommend it, using the money for those two. Mobile crisis, there you go. Thank you. Mobile crisis teams that were out there. So at the end of the, end of the year thing with them was very good. Also had a transit advisory council meeting. Ridership is up about 40% over what it was this time last year on their demand response, which sounds really good, except that's still nowhere near what it was before COVID. It's, I mean, we're getting, in a week, what ridership used to be in a day before COVID. And I think people are still worried about COVID and the repercussions. But also, I think it's also because of the telehealth. A lot of people used to go to their doctors and take the transit to there, but they don't have to do that as often right now because of telehealth. I think that's, and that's here to stay. We'll see how that works out with our transit, you know, with our system. But I think that might be all I have. Oh, the summer family, summer bash is at the Carroll County Sports Complex tomorrow from 4:00 to 9:00. Be there. I will be in the dunk tank at 6:00 to 6:30. Get your tickets early. I heard there's going to be a line.
I'll be in that line.
That is all I do have. Thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Weaver.
Yeah, just, first of all, with the Westminster Veterans Memorial Park, if we can keep Commissioner Boucher out of the tot lot, one of the, I guess, biggest things, the park or the memorial park is still gardens are going to be, are designed. They haven't been finished yet, but beautiful park. I was glad to be part of the ribbon cutting. And I guess the, you know, I want to mention the hamster got hit pretty hard in north of it with the storm. Everybody over there is still without power. A lot of people may be for several days yet, but the fire, police, county employees, everybody's working together to pull this together. And keep in mind, our landfill is going to be quite inundated with debris here. So be, just be patient. Now, a commercial message here. The spotted lanternfly is an invasive species coming into, into the United States. It's into Pennsylvania above us. This is almost like the marmalade stink bug that came in, started in China, went to, I think, Japan, South Korea, and has found its way into the United States. They are on the outlook for it right now in Carroll County. The fly is in the, you see it, that spotted endeavor, the way they look, whether it's the adult or the young adult. And if you see one, you need to notify the extension service or some, and someone in the county here. Once they get established, they become terrible on fruit, vegetables. They're an insect that actually causes the gall on the fruit, and then it actually creates a honeydew that turns into a black soot. It just ruins the fruit and the stem on the plant. So it's one that we want to be on the outlook for. If you see one, Commissioner Boucher has a bounty on the first one found in Carroll County. So, so please contact somebody. Let us know that either the county, myself, the extension agent, NRCS, if you see one, even suspect what it is, find a jar, put it in. They're hoping to try to isolate Carroll County, but like most things, that isn't going to happen. So it's, it's not when, it's not if, it's when I think you're going to see it in Carroll. So, and it could be devastating to the fruit and vegetable industry here in the county. So just be aware of it. Okay?
Okay, Commissioner Boucher?
Thank you. As Commissioner Weaver mentioned, keep me out of tot lot. Advice anyone out there, if you're a grown man and you go down a spiral slide, don't have dress shoes in, you'll get hung up inside of it. Had a lot of fun at that event. I want to reiterate, Commissioner Wance's appreciation to the Roads Department. It is very dangerous to be out there in the roads running chainsaws. They work very hard. I know I had to clean up a tree this week, and I felt beat up for two days afterwards. So thanks to all the men and women out there, in addition to the emergency services. This past weekend, I attended the Union Mills 225th anniversary. What a wonderful venue that is. And this weekend is their Civil War encampment. Hopefully, they'll be shooting off cannons, and Commissioner Wance will hear it at his house. Great event. Bring your kids out. They have a lot of interactive stuff for children to engage. They can dress up as soldiers or act like they're removing bullets from bones. Very great event and educational. Also, I want to give a big shout out to the Orioles out there. They've won 10 in a row. They're above 500 for the first time in, I think, four years in July. So go O's. Also, I wish all my fellow French-Americans out there happy Bastille today. Today is the, basically, the Fourth of July for France. And for all those people that are hard on the French, if it wasn't for the French, we would have no United States of America. It was the French that provided us with the infantry, the Navy, the arms, to trap Cornwallis at Yorktown. And it was the French Navy at the Battle of Capes in Chesapeake that trapped him there. So I give a big shout out to all the French people out there that live in the United States. And I think that will wrap it up. Thank you very much.
Okay. Couple things. First, appreciation to my colleagues and the staff and all my friends and family. As you know, my dad passed last week. And the reason I serve is because of how this community embraces each other during these challenging times. And during that time, another friend passed, and so my dad's passing was very sorrowful. This friend was 53, and that's really tragic. And he's larger than life, to say the least. In fact, the reason I'm wearing a tie, which everyone knows I do not like to wear ties around this time, it's blue and gold. It's LA Rams. And this guy was a diehard avid LA Rams fan, to say the least. In fact, the service today, people will be wearing LA Rams and Orioles, you know, type of, I won't say paraphernalia, whatever, shirts and jerseys. But just again, embracing people that are in times of need is what we do best here in Carroll County. Also, in times of need, we have the hot weather shelters starting to open up across the county, across the community. If we see someone that is in need, get them to a hot weather shelter, please, whether it's at the libraries or the senior centers. That's what they're there to do, is to, is to provide comfort for those that are, you know, in some concern. So keep those that need shelter and give them shelter. The last thing I want to share is, and it's a pretty good segue, because we have the sheriff coming up in a second, is during cabinet meeting, it was brought to my attention, I think by Jenny, about fraud. And there seems to be a lot of fraud issues that are still really ongoing, especially with our seniors. And it hits them on the internet. It hits them on emails. It hits them on telephones, where they don't know where to turn. So I'm asking our guys to work with you, Sheriff, and coming out again and continuingly to teach and tell our community what to do, you know, where to turn, and how to get the message out. Because it's disgusting how folks take advantage of others when it comes to fraud. And they make it sound so real that people are just sending thousands of dollars, you know, unfortunately. So, but I think that is actually, to me, a good segue and gets you up here. And we have a couple issues where the sheriff's going to talk. The first is the acceptance of opioid use disorder exam and treatment grant. Sir?
Good morning.
And thank you for all that you've done.
They crush us on a daily basis. But one of the big things now that we're seeing is Facebook, you'll get a message, or Messenger, that appears to come from a friend that's in your Facebook account that says, hey, how are you doing today? And then they start by saying, I need a little bit of help. And then before long, you're sending money away. So there's so many different scams out there. But you're right, they target the elderly predominantly. Mrs. McDonald will go ahead and start the information on the grant, and I'll answer whatever questions you guys have.
Good morning, Messrs.
Hi.
So the Carroll County Sheriff's Office was awarded an opioid use disorder exam and treatment grant to implement the requirements of Maryland House Bill 116, which requires local detention centers to begin providing various services by January 2023. So in your briefing, you'll see the list of different things. It includes assessments, counseling services, medications, evaluations, evaluations and treatments, various kinds of training, counseling, reentry plans, once they prepare to finish up their sentence and time in the detention center, how to transition them out as they go. So this grant had a maximum amount awarded of $500,000. We put in for more. We couldn't get any more. It is a two-year grant. This is the first time it has come about. So it was not known at the time. This House bill has been out. It has gone through some iterations, but it has various requirements, reporting requirements, things that the detention centers are required to provide. Some of the items that are included are for staffing, for additional medical staff needed to administer the program, also for additional overtime schedules, if you will. So you need to have some of our deputies with the medical staff in the area, building out of space, buying the equipment for the first time, and then partnering with our current medical provider for additional staff, medications. We also will be working with various stakeholders, such as the Health Department, Access Carroll. We have a lot of work to do. There's a lot of planning involved. The goal is to have everything in place so that we're able to start providing it in January of '23.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, real quick, as you know, it's a January 23 mandate. And typically, the mandates out of Annapolis are unfunded. I'd say typically, all of them are generally unfunded. In this case, we get a grant through the opioid command center. Now, it's a two-year grant. We don't know what's going to happen after the two years. We're hoping that they supply us with another grant that we can reapply for once we've honed the program and got the finances exactly to what they are. But if not, then the next board is going to have to look at how to pick, pick this up and continue with it. This is kind of reversal on how we work. So we fight to keep Suboxone, Methadone, Buprenorphine, any maintenance drug really out of the jail. Now, we're going to bring it in and identify individuals that would be a part of this program to administer the Methadone, Buprenorphine, or Suboxone, too. And so as opposed to, we do medical runs every morning, and I'll take a wild guess. I, these guys give me briefings every morning on the population and who, who in the jail is getting some sort of medication. Roughly 80, 85% of the individuals that are in our jail are being visited by a cart every morning in a housing unit and are receiving some sort of medication from Tylenol all the way up to some sort of drug that's there to help with an ailment. And so in this case, this has got to be a room that's set up so that we, we can't just cart stuff around the jail and this sort of substance around the jail. We've got to bring inmates to us, which is different than what we do on a daily basis in the jail. We visit the housing units and visit each inmate. So now we've got to move inmates about. And if there's 30, 40, 50, or half of the jail that can participate in this program, I've got to have staff to move an inmate securely from one location to another, get them back to a housing unit. So it's a little bit more cumbersome than just saying, let's go ahead and start an MAT program, supply these drugs, and then administer it. It's a little bit more than that. And then, again, you don't just give someone a maintenance drug without trying to look at the long term of how do we wean them off of that maintenance drug? And what do we do with them when we, when they leave the jail? And who do we hand them off to so that they can continue the treatment? But not just treatment, but job placement, reentry, everything that has to do with reentry. And so it's a, it's a big program. It's not an easy program to administer. But Mrs. McDonald's excellent at looking at these, these grants and trying to maximize every dollar that we can and get everything that we can out of it. And so we believe we're off to the, to the races on this, but it's going to take a little bit of time to get it up and running. My staff will tell me that they believe somewhere between 30 and 40 inmates right now would be able to participate in the program. And you don't just walk in and say, start giving me Suboxone, Methadone, or anything like that. This is a, this is an evaluation that needs to be done before that can, that can take place. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Sheriff, you know how personal this issue is, myself and many other people out there? And you basically answered what I was going to ask about. And I must say, I have been a big fan of both you and former State Senator Brian D. Leonardo when you ran for office eight years ago. You came for it with a very progressive way to address this, and I think it's working. And I'm glad to see we have this. Usually, this might be the first contact of someone going into recovery through your institution. And the fact that we're looking at this issue this way is very, very smart, having had a daughter who suffered from this and died. I wish that there was more programs like this available years ago. And you've watched over the last eight years how this epidemic has progressed and evolved in our community, and I think it's gotten worse over the last couple of years. So this is very timely, and I applaud everyone in your department for doing this. And with that, I'd like the honor of making a motion, if it's all right with you, please. I move the Board of County Commissioners accept the opioid use disorder exam and treatment grant.
Second? Okay, I've got a motion and a couple of seconds. Out of all of the breakdown of how the funds are going to be used, you know, how is some of this going to be sustained when this grant is no longer available to us? And have you prioritized, if you cannot get money via grant, how are you going to request a budget? What are your thoughts?
That's a good question. I've already been, probably for the past...
You've got a genie in a bottle on that one. We'll take it.
You've got a genie in a bottle on that one, we'll take it. We talk to Heidi, our analyst, all the time, and she knows that this is a two-year grant, and that we've got to start looking at it with Ted's office. Should that grant not be renewable in two years? I certainly hope the next administration that comes in down in Annapolis is willing to keep it going, but you're going to be saddled with the burden at some point. It's a legislated mandate that we can't walk away from, so Vicky talks to her regularly about it.
We started in with the Grants Office as well, back in the early spring, just looking at what should we put in, what do we think we need to put in. So obviously, all the one-time purchases, try to get them in, get them covered. The ongoing is tough, and there's still a lot of planning. So while we did our best estimating as to what things would be, we probably have six to eight meetings with various stakeholders over the next few months to start looking at what are the best solutions, short term and long term? How do we partner? What's the best way to manage this? There's a lot of other people now that have to come into this, outside of the detention center and within the community. So as you've already stated this morning, that's one of the great things about Carroll County, everyone's more than willing to step up. So can other places get grants? So it's not just this grant. So that's with looking short term and long term. Are there other areas for, you know, other opportunities in the out years for other types of funding? You know, what can Access Carroll do? What can the Health Department do? What can all these other, you know, partners that we need to work with do? So a lot of it is planning and discussion, looking with our current medical provider. They also have people on staff that are doing this around the state, so that is not their first rodeo, which is a great thing for us, because we're looking to them for guidance. What are you seeing? What are you seeing what's working? So a lot of, it's a lot of planning and a lot of communication right now, and then also seeing where we're going to be with what we estimated. Because these are estimates, with it being a max, we knew, you know, we weren't in a position to be down to the penny, and it's too early to tell, because you just don't know how it's going to work out. But at least this gets us going, you know, well into FY '23, into FY '24, but then preparing for the out years, so that we have some better information as we work with Grants Office and the Budget Office to see what we think it's going to, you know, actually cost over time.
Cost of the drugs is going to be the issue in the future. To give you an example, we, there's a, Vivitrol is a drug that we can administer in the jail. I think at one point, we started out $600 for a shot for that, it's up to $1,300 now for one shot, and it's a twenty-eight day shot. So, I mean, the drug costs are going to go through the roof, and unfortunately, because it's a mandate, the drug companies really are going to capitalize on this, because they know we've got to buy one of these three substances, and so that's going to be the future of what it's going to cost to buy these drugs, and how are we going to get the money to do it?
I mean, I'm positive, I'm for this, it's just, you know, you mentioned the out years, and as you know, that was the biggest struggle we had, you know, working this year, next year, following year. We got, it's those out years that...
But I think if we have strong support in Annapolis, then we can continue to push that we need to make sure that these things are funded for locals like us. I don't, it's got to be that way. I don't know how they can continue to saddle us with a million here, a million there constantly.
Yes.
And you know, the funny thing about this is, the state, the state's not mandated for this, so it's only local jurisdictions. When I say the state, if they leave my jail and go to a state correctional facility, they're not mandated. Now, how does that happen?
Oh, I get you, it's just, but, you know, to say that things can't be mandated and unfunded...
Oh, we know, we live it every day, I agree with you. Body worn camera, all this other stuff that we're doing, I agree with you. But this is something that's obviously affecting every jurisdiction around the state, including the people that mandate this stuff, and so hopefully there's strong representation down there to continue this grant funding. I would hope that it's less than 500,000, like Mrs. McDonald said, we're looking at front-ending all the one-time stuff so that we don't have to buy these things in out years, and then we just deal with personnel and medication as we move forward, so.
Well, I think to add to that, working with all these stakeholders, then you do get a bigger voice. So it's not just one, you know, not just the Sheriff's Office, that looking around at all the people that are involved, so that you have a bigger voice to say, hey, look, we need to continue funding from different angles, which can only help, that it's not just one area. So that's all we can, you know, work with, everybody's on the same page, advocating for the same needs now and later, to keep that in the forefront.
And one last thing, we are seeing the numbers go down, and that's this month, you know, and that's so far the six months this year. And I don't live on a month-to-month cycle when it comes to opioid numbers, you just can't do that. But we are seeing a decrease in numbers, I mean, but a lot of that is the education and prevention efforts that we've been doing over the last several years. Hopefully, continue to see the decrease. It's in the teens for overdoses, and it's in the teens for deaths, and so what we're doing is working.
And the addiction does not respect political jurisdictions, it's everyone's problem when people see what's going on in Baltimore City that inadvertently affects us as well. So it's all of us in this together.
I'm no longer floored by what I hear anymore, or who I hear is addicted by it. It doesn't floor me, it's just like, let's just, let's move, let's get them to where we got to get them and figure it out.
Are you going to be looking at, I assume you're looking at additional personnel for the counseling services and so forth, that this also...
That's part of this, is...
Right, so those are ongoing expenses that, once you hire somebody, you hope to keep that person near, if they work out well, to help with the counseling and so forth.
Yeah, we wouldn't hire them, it would be through our medical provider, or it would be through Access Carroll Health Department.
Or other places that we can find where there's counseling, but we'd be looking to contract out, or it could come through, yes, that we're just partnering with other people and they provide those services.
Right.
That's part of the fun of looking at it.
That's the key to all of it, really. I mean, the maintenance drug is one thing, and that sounds, but there's another, there's thirty pieces to that, that hopefully make it work so these numbers keep decreasing.
And that's also the key to my concern, is that ongoing dollars for counseling, and, you know, especially getting past '24 into '25, '26.
But I think that hopefully by the end of this grant period, we'll have some better finite costs on what it's going to take to do this. And so we asked for the max, they gave us everything Vicky asked for, so.
This symbolizes the humanity of your department, by the way.
Well, it's everybody, really. I mean, I'm, seriously, Eric, I mean, he's, Dennis was on the call yesterday, we were all on it, and there's fifty people on that call from every organization known to man in this county that's trying to combat this, and so there's so many entities trying to combat it. We're just at, in one small facet of it that we can affect, but, and the guys in the jail, and the girls in the jail, and the people that come in and support us, outstanding. I mean, hell, they lost power, too, yesterday, or two days ago, and they're working off of a generator, and candles, and flashlights, and everything else that we're working off of. But the level of respect and the things that are going on in the jail, they have such a grasp, and even the inmates understand and work with us to try and figure it out. So it's a good group, and they're going to do the right thing with this, and a lot of support coming from the outside, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Got a motion, a couple of seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We've got one other issue that is a match for...
You know, with overtime grants.
Yes. So the Carroll County Sheriff's Office receives several grants that provide overtime to Sheriff's Office personnel to work on specific issues impacting the safety of Carroll County. These grants provide a valuable supplement to the work of the Sheriff's Office. So the county match, the county cash match is required for grants that do not allow the cost of payroll taxes to be requested for reimbursement. So it is budgeted in FY '23, so we do work with the Budget Office, looking through and forecasting out what the grants will be, and which ones we cannot request the payroll taxes for. So the estimated county match is $4,330, and as I mentioned, that is already included in the budget. And then the overtime grants as a total are about $165,000 that we receive.
And these are like highway safety grants, sex offender registry, all the things that just supplement what we're doing on a regular basis that you guys hear about. So, again, it's budgeted.
Is the estimated county match a not-to-exceed amount, or just a ballpark amount?
It would, it could be considered a not-to-exceed, because, for example, if we don't, depending on how the calculations are, it may not go up to that amount, depending on the activity. Some of our overtime grants are related to cases, so we are budgeted in a grant, like, let's say, up to $12,000. Well, maybe we only need ten, so yes, it is, you can consider it a not-to-exceed.
Okay, pay that FICA guy.
Yeah. Forget about him. Thank God I got her an ID, kid.
We won't let you forget about it.
No, I know you won't.
I'll make the motion that we approve the county match for Sheriff's Office overtime grants.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll see you guys a little bit later on.
Promiser threat.
Both.
Okay, Ms. Hobbs, why don't you come on up, and let's talk about resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds.
I always have the exciting stuff.
Yes. We'll contain our excitement over here.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. We are before you, or I should say, I am before you, nobody else up here, with the resolution to declare the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds. Following the recent adoption of the FY '23 budget, a resolution is to be approved by the Board of Commissioners declaring the county's intent to reimburse the CIP, which is the Community Investment Plan, expenditures that are intended to be funded with debt proceeds. The resolution is necessary to meet the Internal Revenue Code regulations for tax-exempt bonds, and to maintain that status as tax-exempt. The resolution covers $28,449, or, I'm sorry, $28,449,945 of projected bond funding, which is equal to what was in the Community Investment Plan FY '23 budget. I can go through the amount by function for general government, roads, bridges, public schools, conservation, and open space, culture and recreation. For more details, which we have included in your packet there, and for the public, they can actually go on the county's website and look at the adopted Community Investment Plan, and look at the pages that have bond funding for each project, so it's a little more detailed on those projects. This resolution either authorizes or creates an obligation to issue debt, it's just saying that we can reimburse ourselves using debt and having the tax-exempt status. So the resolution's been reviewed by the County Attorney's Office for legal sufficiency, and I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt the resolution declaring the official intent to reimburse with debt proceeds.
That was very exciting and technical.
So this is where the mouth comes in.
I'm sorry?
Mouth dollars come in.
The mouth?
Mouth?
This is just us issuing, this is in order for us to issue the bonds when we do an issuance, which we'll be getting ready to when we go to the credit rating agencies. This is for us to be able to say we can reimburse ourselves and maintain a tax-exempt status for anyone that invests in those bonds.
So it's not the breakdown of the different areas that you have behind us?
It is for that. It matches the FY '23 budget, and then this is just the bond funding portion.
Okay.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve the resolution declaring the county's official intent to reimburse expenditures with debt proceeds.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions on this? And a strong understanding of what's been said? Okay. Seeing here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs.
Okay, let's talk about, what do we want to talk about? Pay scale recommendations. It's going to be fun.
Could be.
A week ago, Commissioners, I came in and I told you I was excited about what we were going to talk about, and I got some funny looks.
You always get funny looks.
I'm even more excited today, and you can tell that, because I didn't even bring my Mountain Dew with me.
You already jacked up on it.
So we're here, again, continuing our conversation about concerns about recruiting, retaining county employees, and the impact on our ability to maintain services. And talked about this a number of times, but I want to go back to that idea again, so people understand. Our big driver here is worrying about how do we continue to maintain the services that you're looking to offer and that the people are expecting to receive. You can't do it if you don't have the people. Last week, we came to you with recommended changes in our personnel code, changes that we think are going to make a big difference. A few highlights from that, changes that will make annual and personal leave available to employees on probation. This only affects employees for six months, but this is a big deal. It's been a constant source of frustration. It's going to improve salary increases for promotions, the places where we have people that we want to move up the organization, and they've declined because the pay change just wasn't enough to make sense for them. We've increased, or shouldn't we say we have increased, pending the public hearing and your approval, it will increase flexibility for salary offers to potential employees who are bringing relevant experience to us, a place where we've had to pass sometimes on employees we wanted to bring in, just because there wasn't room to do something. Increase the amount of annual and sick leave for employees in their first ten years with the county. And we have a pretty good annual and sick leave program, but for people in the first ten years, you're going to get more quickly to the best parts of what we have. We're going to increase the amounts of annual compensatory leave that can be carried. For people who sometimes run into a difficult position in life, this can be a lot of flexibility. This, not going to be a big deal for everybody, but for some people, it will be. And all sick leave will now be available for caring for family members. There was even more, but we're not going to go through everything today. Now, these weren't code changes, but last week, we also brought you changes to the remote work policy, and talked about alternate work schedules. Last week, we promised we'd be back with the next step, the very important next step of addressing our compensation competitiveness. That's what we're here for today. So we're going to share recommendations with you now. But before we get to the recommendations, I want to address a question that's likely to occur to you. We engaged SEAL to help us work through our concerns and help us develop an action plan. You haven't seen a final report from SEAL yet, so you might be saying, why are we talking about this now? We continue to work closely with SEAL, but their work is behind schedule. So we don't have their final report yet, but we believe we have the work from them that we need in order to be able to give you these recommendations. And we aren't waiting for the final report, because we don't believe we can afford to wait any longer. We just can't wait. Our concerns aren't going away. Every day that goes by is leaves us exposed to losing another employee or missing out on the opportunity to get the next employee.
Can I jump in there?
Sure.
So more than a year ago now, doesn't seem like it's been that long, but Robin was here before you discussing the same issues with recruitment and retention. At that time, she talked to you all about positions that we had not been able to fill that had been open for some time. Today, unfortunately, I have to tell you, some of the same positions are still open. I have a boiler mechanic that's been vacant for 753 days. We cannot hire for that position. County surveyor, 676 days. The financial systems administrator, 232 days, and we still have nineteen open positions and roads. The twenty-eight postings that we have on the board now, which are for a total of sixty-nine positions, twenty are open until filled. We also continue with the issue, we go through the whole process, and we talked about this last week, go through the whole process, get to the point where we offer to the candidate, and they say, yeah, no thanks, not enough money. Our retention of employees is still a difficult stage as well, our turnover rate for '22 fiscal year increased to 11.12%, and that was up from 8.76% in FY '21, and has been the largest since fiscal year '95, when I went back through all the years. So what we're asking of you today is going to help us with all of these issues. Now, let Ted continue. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
Fiscal year '95 is when I came here.
We've been blessed ever since.
No, is there a causal relationship?
No, there's not.
So the big message there, problems are not going away by themselves. So let's get to the recommendations. Now, you set aside funding in the budget for the specific purpose of addressing compensation. There are two pieces to what we're going to be recommending. One is moving the scales and... One is moving the scales, and one is moving existing employees through the scales. So on moving the scales, think of this like a COLA. This will help recruitment by boosting our starting pay. The number that goes on the job advertisement is gonna be higher. This will also help with retention because every employee is gonna see an increase in their pay. We're recommending a ten percent change in our scales. Every employee reporting to the Commissioners will get this increase. Now, why ten percent? Now, based on a market study, SEAL suggested eight to ten percent. So this is in line with what they're talking about. But if you dig into the market study, which looks at an average of about ten jurisdictions and looks at an average of a whole wide range of positions, but if you dig in and start looking at the details, there are places where we can easily argue we need more than ten percent to be able to get certain jobs competitive. Ten percent, though, is what we thought was doable, and we'll come back to that in a minute. Moving people through the scales, think of this as an increment. This will help us with retention by recognizing the experience and the knowledge that employees have gained here in Carroll County. Every employee who's been here at least one year as of July first, twenty-twenty-two, so a couple weeks ago, will receive an increase based on their years of service. One exception, this does not include contractual because that's a different employee, employer relationship. Now, a lot of thought went into developing these recommendations. We have limited funding, and we couldn't just say, "What do we think we ought to do?" We knew how much money we had to work with. So we needed a combination of these two actions. Moving the scales and moving people through the scales that was both fundable and did the most to address our concerns. We're trying to maximize the impact we're gonna get from the money we have to use. And we explored many combinations. I can't even guess how many things we looked at. And we extensively discussed the pluses and minuses of this package versus this package. In the end, we concluded that what we are bringing you today was the best package, the one that bought us, bought us the most. This combination does the most to address both recruitment and retention concerns, did the most to make us more competitive. Now, there are a lot of variables and unknowns to make it difficult to say exactly how much this will cost us as it all plays out. But with what we know today, we believe this is about six million dollars. Now, you earmarked a little more than seven million dollars. The remainder is to fund the phases that we've said are still coming. That will include things like classification changes, career ladder changes, and positions that are related to addressing organization development needs. We believe that will give us the room to keep moving through the other things we're gonna do. Now, on those changes, those are still ahead of us. And just want people to understand, it's gonna take time. We still have a lot of work to do. These changes are big. This, this is... I have not experienced anything even remotely comparable to what we're suggesting here in my twenty-eight years. My hopes for what this is gonna mean to the organization are high. That said, I don't want to leave an idea, though, that this makes all of our concerns go away because it won't. This isn't enough to do everything that we would like to do. It's gonna be a great, a great help, but challenges will remain. Now, the local governments we compete against, and when I say compete against, it's not that we're trying to keep up with another local government. I'm saying we're competing for the same people sometime. You know, Tim could be the county attorney in Carroll, or he could be the county attorney in Frederick, and sometimes people are making a choice.
Don't give him any suggestions. He's holding his tongue.
So, so local governments that we compete against for employees will likely still have pay advantages in some positions, not all positions, but in some positions. And keep in mind that other jurisdictions, the pay in other jurisdictions isn't standing still because we're talking about making these moves. We're not doing this in a vacuum. Other jurisdictions are making choices. And Hartford is not a county that we would typically lose people to. But this year, not as a special change, but as their annual change, they gave a seven percent COLA and a three percent merit. So we're still, the world continues to move around us. But we believe this will narrow the gap on some of those positions and change the decision-making process. And when I say change the decision-making process, I'm talking about somebody who is considering a job here and in Howard. And if the, if the pay difference is fifteen thousand dollars, and they're considering, well, fifteen, the commute, I like being in Carroll, what's that mean to me is one thing. If the pay difference is five thousand dollars, that changes the thinking. And where our hope is, that this puts us close enough on those kind of positions that people feel okay making the choice to come here or to stay here. Another thing we're gonna be facing is private sector moves to meet and exceed minimum wages. You know, they all have to meet the new minimum wage law, just like we do. But we're seeing choices to not meet the law, but they're exceeding minimum wage. You can go to Aldi right now and pack shopping carts for sixteen dollars. That has an impact on some of the jobs we're trying to find people for. You know, it's, it's a, a range of options that maybe is looking more attractive to people than it did ten or fifteen years ago. And then in a really big way, you know, our concern about pending retirements doesn't go away. Now, some people might choose to work longer after these recommendations than, than they might have, but people are still gonna retire, and that's, that's out there. And the whole national great resignation and everything that everybody's trying to figure out about what does this mean for the workforce, that's, that's still hanging out there. We can't make that go away. Now, last week, we came to you with code changes and remote and alternate work schedule changes. Today, we're here with pay changes. We'll be back in the future. I don't know the timetable for this yet, but we'll be back with recommendations, including classification changes and career ladder changes. Again, this is gonna take time. We have a lot of work to do before we're ready to do that. I hope when employees hear this, that they're feeling as excited about this as, as we are. I, I really believe they should be. This is a big deal. So that's what we needed to tell you today. Is there anything that you would like to discuss or ask us?
If this is approved today, how soon will it go into effect?
August fourth.
I didn't hear you.
August fourth.
Right, actually, that was, that was coming up. I didn't want to jump to that before your, your questions, but right. If, if, if we, if we get your approval today, we believe this could take, uh, could take effect as of August fourth. So it wouldn't be the paycheck that people get, but the paycheck based on August fourth.
Everyone that knows you knows that for you to say you're excited about something, it is quite exceptional. Your leadership has been impeccable on this. This is all long overdue, and like we said before, this is part of the legacy you're leaving behind. And all of our county employees need to be very grateful for you and the team you put together to put this in place. And with that, I move the approval to recommend compensation changes.
Second.
Okay. I got a motion, I got a second. I do have some comments. First comment is, the motion second came from the two that did not want to move forward with the budget, which I find interesting. I'm not saying this is wrong. I believe we're doing, taking the right steps, but when we put something in the budget and it was not approved by, you know, those that are doing this, I'm like, I'm, I'm, I get very confused. We do have a problem in front of us. We've recognized that problem. We've recognized a problem for probably over ten years when we took away a lot of positions and we started really streamlining. Because we took away positions, we decreased our revenue coming into the county. And now we're saying we have seventy positions that are open. I mean, we, we made our own bed, is what we've done over the last ten to a dozen years. We came to grips with that. We brought in this study, which I am very, you know, supportive of. And I am a little bit upset that they're behind schedule. That's the first time I've heard that today since we're providing them a lot of funds to get the study done to allow us to make the appropriate decisions. The sixty-nine positions that we have vacant, I do believe they need to be prioritized, not just by time of vacancy, but what are the most critical? And are, are there alternative ways to fill those positions besides taking this step? Can some of them be contractual, you know, using some of these funds as well? Of that seven million dollars that we've put aside to fit our county or to make our county whole and competitive to other jurisdictions and other, you know, private, you know, opportunities. Pending retirements does weigh on me, you know, but that's the way of life, you know? And we've had transition of some senior directors and others have stepped up, and I'm very proud of those that have, and, you know, transition of senior folks, you know, is just, is a part of what we have to do. I think in doing this, so, so that, that's important, but, you know, it's not as big of a factor. I think what's important for me is, are we willing to look at doing something like this and then keeping on the table the importance of either changing the number of recs that we have to meet the needs and requirements of Carroll County? And are we willing to put on the table the importance of looking at revenue coming into the county? Because like I said, two colleagues vote against it. So, I mean, that, that's important.
I'll go first, I'll go second.
Well, I, if, if, I don't want to cut you off if you don't finish. I did vote against the budget, and I gave my reasons for voting against the budget. I did not vote against, this was not one of the reasons. And one of the reasons, and main reason I gave is because I think we should have looked at getting more revenue coming into the county. I expressed that over and over again over the past eight years I've been county commissioner. I still believe that, and that is why I voted against the budget because without the more revenue coming in and you're looking at the out years and four, years four and five away from here, how the deficit, that was my concern. That's why I voted against the budget. Had nothing to do with this compensation package. I wish it was larger, but we need more revenue coming in. I'll, I'll let it go there.
No, and I, I, trust me, I'm not dishing you for what you've done. It's just, you know, every additional cost... No, I, I apologize. Every additional cost...
It is confusing. I, I agree.
Every additional cost that we have in the county, you know, adds to the deficit of the out years. Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I know we're piecemealing things, but, you know, when, when we start looking at agricultural, you know, support, you know, and I have colleagues saying, "No, we don't want to do that," or I look at other things and they say, "No," and we package it all together. And like I said, it was a very, it's a challenge. I'm for this. I am for this, but I'm for this with our eyes wide open, you know? That we are in a significant hole coming three, four, five years down the road. And it is confusing, so. Yeah, so, well, I apologize. Commissioner Boucher, you wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you. You know, I just want to reiterate for clarification that I have been wholeheartedly in support of this since I was pushing initiatives to bring reform to our system. So yes, I voted against the overall budget for a multitude of reasons. It's very complex. There are a lot of components coming together. But I have been wholeheartedly behind this concept that we're trying to execute now. I just want to state that, and I appreciate Commissioner Fraser for stating it before I did. Thank you.
But we're not living within our means by doing this. That, that's the fact. We are not living within our means. And the two of you have said no to the budget because we're not able to live within our means.
But you seem to be forgetting that we, as individually elected officials, can reflect their constituency in supporting or not supporting different line items in the budget. And this happened to be one of the line items that both Commissioner Fraser and I supported.
I'm not sure what that was, but the fact is that you vote about not living within your means.
I'm a little disappointed in the SEAL study. Why is it delayed?
We took on, you might remember at the very beginning of this, we told you we were taking on a very ambitious schedule, and we had concerns. And they, they haven't been able to get it done. But I would not, we're disappointed too, but I would not let that get in the way of this discussion because it really doesn't matter. We have from them what we need to take this step. There's still work that they're doing that's gonna be related to classifications and career ladders. That's ahead of us, but we're not asking you to decide anything about that today. So I, I'm, I am perfectly comfortable with our position right now relative to what we're gonna get from SEAL.
Is there a performance clause to them, to perform on time?
We will look into how we want to deal with SEAL, but I, I don't think today's really the day.
I mean, we paid a great deal of money to have that report, and we don't have it.
Not arguing at all. I'm just saying, we, we need to look at that, but that's not what we're here for today.
Okay. That, that, that's fair. I mean, at, at least I, I think that's fair. If you believe the information received from the SEAL study got us to where we need to be today, allowing us to make a decision, got it.
There's nothing we're gonna, there's nothing more we're gonna get from them that's gonna be relevant to this discussion.
Thank you.
We predicted this.
Well, we were concerned.
I mean, pretty much.
I just, you know, again, you know, I, I was for voting for the budget. I believe it was the right decision to make. I was voting for not increasing our revenue because of the environment we're living in. Knowing that we are living outside of our means in the out years, that was not, you know, unanimous. And that's what kinda gets, gets me on this right now. Because these, these numbers are going to add to the increased deficit.
They're already built into those numbers.
For the out years, the seven million dollars?
Yes. You, you adopted a budget with this already, already calculated in. And you know my concerns about our position. You've, you've heard me talk plenty about that. We, we adopted what we adopted, understanding what we're doing. That included doing this. I, I, I really want to encourage you as strongly as I can to not let how the process played out be the driver of what we do here. This, this is too important. When I, when I say we, we, not only can't we, in my mind, not do this, when I said we can't wait, I, I meant it. You know, we're getting hurt every day. We, we need to do something.
After making the sale, you don't need to sell anymore.
I've, I've been kinda silent on this up to this point. I'm not gonna get into the budget debate, but I find it very interesting too that one of my colleagues spent money all the way up to the end and then voted against it. But I hope I'm wrong, but just throwing money at prospective employees, I don't think is the answer. I don't think it's the entire answer. I think it's more about the, the quality of, of, of the workplace, the, the ability to think outside of, of the norm when it comes to how we perform our jobs. I think there's, there needs to be a huge emphasis on classifications and, and the career ladders. I've said that many times. I don't think there's enough steps in order for folks to be able to achieve where they want to get to. So I hope that there's, I hope that we're not cutting ourselves short with just throwing ten percent pay increases at folks and that not having enough to really put an emphasis on creating abilities for people to be able to promote through the ranks in, in a, in a good manner. Because I, I hear it too. I, I mean, I don't want to get back to that. I, I, I talk to a lot of people and I'm related to a lot of people here, but I am. And I talk to them about what their, what their concerns are, and that's one of the biggest things I hear. So over the last year, we have, we will have now given about a fifteen percent pay raise. And that, that's great. But where does it stop? Because as you say, Ted, it, it's always about competing with, with other jurisdictions. It, it, you can sugarcoat it all you want. It, it, you can sugarcoat it all you want, but that's what it's about. Because I can go to Howard and make a heck of a lot more money than I can here. Or I can go to Montgomery. And it's not that big of a commute. It, it's really not. So we're always going to be behind when it comes to that. We forget about what the median income is here in Carroll and, and what it costs, what the cost of living is here, uh, which I think's in, in, important too. So, I, I'm, I'm for, I, I don't want to sound like I'm against this. I'm, I'm not. But I just hope that we really put an emphasis on, more of an emphasis on creating that work environment here that I think's really important. And, and again, I, I'm not going to point fingers here today or at anybody or whatever, but there are, there are concerns in our workforce about the quality of, of employment here and working under various folks and how things occur here. For me, it's just not about throwing money at people. And while that really looks like what we're doing, and again, I'm not, I mean, that's a heck of a raise. 15% in, in 18 months? Unheard of anywhere. And I know we got to catch up, but I do think we really need to take a look at the entire package. And that is.
Bear with us just for a second.
That is the, the quality of, of, of what it means to walk in the door here and work in this facility or wherever, our outer facilities. So that's what my emphasis is on.
Ted, just bear with us a second. Dick, you had a comment?
Uh, Steve, I don't totally agree with you. We have a different mentality in the workforce coming in. The younger workforce looks at things differently than we did entering the workforce as 20, couple years of age. And one of the things, they do look at money before other things. I agree with you. We have, uh, some issues in the workplace, but here again, Carroll's a great place to work. Uh, we have a lot of good things going on here. Yes, it's not perfect in our environment. I'm sure we have issues to deal with, but Kim has been dealing with, I think, a lot of these that they pop up and, uh, her staff. But, um, you know, we, it's not a bad place to work, but here again.
I'm not suggesting that it is.
No, but we have to.
You're taking, you're taking me down the wrong street here. I don't appreciate that. That's not what I'm saying.
The type of people we're looking to get, and the millennials are looking at things differently than.
Well, there's no doubt. They're looking at money. Money, money, money. Show me the money.
Right off the bat.
My point is, that's not, and the total package here needs to be looked at. It's not just about the money.
Yeah, well, I agree with you there. But I looked at a article this morning, I think it was 9.2% inflation they're predicting, uh, the way I was reading this article could possibly happen. We give a 10% raise, inflation goes up, they're not much further ahead than where they were. Now, I, I don't know if it would ever get to that point and that, you know, article could have been on sensationalism also. But, um, I, I think, you know, Ted's right in this. I, I like his enthusiasm on it. As I said, I'm disappointed in Segal not performing on time. I wish we could have done it in the proper order. But we need to be competitive. We need to have people, and we're not just other counties. We're, we're competing against private industry out here. And they're just, uh, killing us on this. They have the ability to make changes faster than we do. And as I said, that's why we have a covered wagon as our logo. But, um, I, I do believe, I'm, I'm going to be for this, I'm not opposed to it, but, uh, I, I think this is step one. And I know our budget's going to be out of, uh, whack on this, but it's allocated in. We know it's something we had to do. We said that for months, uh, years. So we need to keep up, uh, people coming in, quality people entering Carroll County, and make it that workforce that you want to, uh, have. I, I believe that environment you're after, this is a step to get to that environment. Not the ultimate end, but it's a step to get there.
Perception's reality, and I think that's also where you were going, was 15% is a huge jump in, and a very significant jump in increase. And, you know, this attitude that we live in an ivory tower from, you know, Carroll County government, everybody's looking at, oh, there goes Carroll County spending more money on itself, um, does concern me because we get a lot of that feedback. I think what needs to be reminded is that we are in a significant shortfall of 10% or maybe 8, 9% right now, which is probably the lowest it's been in quite some time, um, as far as, uh, needing hires. What's that?
Vacancies.
Vacancies, yeah. Um, but, uh, that's significant. And that message has to get out on especially events like the last couple of days, you know, getting the right people in the right place to get the hires. Um, so, I mean, I just.
To, to that point, every county's in the same boat for the most part. Look at the, look at the openings in the surrounding jurisdictions. There, and a lot of them are much more because their workforce is bigger, obviously. But there's a, there's openings in government across the state. So, again, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to, I, I'm excited for this too, and I'm excited for our employees because that's a heck of.
Right.
That's a heck of an increase. Uh, and I hope you prove me wrong. I won't, I'll be watching, um, but I don't think that's going to immediately fix the amount of vacancies that are on that board out in the hallway. I just do not believe that.
Yeah. And, and like I said.
Because I think there's more internal that needs to occur here. And that's what I was hopeful for in Segal. Money aside, we all knew that. We all knew that going out of the gate. We don't pay enough. Got it. But I think there's more to the picture here than just money.
We, we.
Hope that we look at that too.
We agree with you.
Yeah.
And we, we've had a number of discussions about this over this last year or so. And I, I feel like I've, I've, I've failed here to, to, to share the, the message. Because what we've been telling you is, we're looking at all kinds of things with the organization, from what kind of positions we have, to how we should be organized, to our supervisor structure. You know, you say emphasis on career ladders and classifications, you know, I've told you, that's, that's coming back. It's a, it's the next step. It is no less important to us than, than this step. We're just not there yet.
No, you, you did.
Yeah, I, yeah, I got that. I just, I don't want that 7.2 or whatever's left there. I, I want it to be able to be divided in the best way that it can be.
And that's what we're telling you, we believe we've done.
So, again, y, y, you know, you don't need to make the sale after the sale. And you, you, you've given us the confidence to do this next step, you know? And so there shouldn't be any frustration, any of that. I think for me, it's important that the message is, gets out clearly, uh, one, to our workforce on the importance of having the strength in our workforce, but also two, to our county, the importance of having a strong workforce to meet the needs of safety, security, best education quality of life possible in our county. And the only way we can do that is by having this strong workforce. And that's why we did what we did. I mean, this started from a conversation I think three of us had downstairs, you know, on, in individual, and it kind of blossomed from there. And so, but, but that's part of this decision. That's got to get out very clearly. Because if it doesn't, then we're going to just, I think, be continually being, you know, jabbed for not understanding the importance of getting, even in a very streamlined county workforce. Because like, uh, Commissioner Wann said, I think for every individual we have, there's three employees in other counties that are doing the same as what we have as one. And that's why it's important that we have, uh, 100% fill. I apologize. I mean, I didn't mean to cut you off. I know you have a couple of things you wanted to share. But you should have a lot of confidence that we're on board with this. Um, and that's why we'd made the decision we did during the budget. My initial salvo was, I was concerned that the budget didn't clearly pass, and the out-years are going to be very difficult for us to be able to fund this. But if you're confident that's going to happen, I'm, I'm good. So, um, any, did you want to share any more? I mean, any further discussion on this? I have a motion, and I have a second, and again, an appreciation for our entire workforce.
I want to say it's, it's frustrating, number one, that you, your first thing was about Commissioner Boucher and myself not voting for the budget. But then you didn't even have the understanding, this is already in the budget.
I forgot.
Then, you, I'm sorry, you got to think.
I, I know it's in the budget.
Don't come out like that.
Listen.
That's all, I'll just stop right there.
I got it. I know it's in the budget. I, my mind was somewhere else. I know it's in the budget.
I just don't remember this much scrutiny being placed into the 22% raise for the Sheriff's Department during election year where people were courting FOP endorsements. So I find it quite funny. I think this is a wonderful thing. I'm very much looking forward to moving forward and satisfying our county employees who actually felt kind of dissed over the fact that without any hesitation, this board gave a 22% raise to deputy sheriffs. Not that they don't deserve it, but it was kind of slapping the face to every single county employee we have answering to us. And this is a rectification of that wrong. So thank you.
Actually, it wasn't whatsoever. I know you vote against the raises to our sheriff's department, and that was very clear. This money was put in the budget to do exactly what it's doing. So it's not slap in the face. We, we allocated this money. I do apologize because I do know it was in, my mind was somewhere else. I do know we put this money in to do exactly what we're doing today. So it's, there's no, there's no slaps. This was just a preparation to where we had to go today. So, um.
And just like everything else with me, you don't understand how I do this job. I don't think you understand how you, how you do this job. But I didn't, to bring po, politics into this is, is below the belt. But, but I expect that from you, so I'm not shocked by that. And I didn't do that to get anybody's endorsement, nor have I ever done that. So, way to go with the rudeness, Boucher. Nicely done. You always have the, you always have the ability to, to, to roll right in there with below the belt, don't you? It's a great thing.
Okay, I want to call for a vote. We got a motion, we got a second. Any other discussion on this? Seeing here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Absolutely. Let's talk about land resource management, request approval for change order. I love change orders. Uh, for the construction of Locust Wetland Stormwater Management Facility. And you're going to convince us of why this change order is necessary.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. So, um, yes, we, we're here to discuss the Locust Wetland Stormwater Management Facility there, uh, that we're constructing out in Union Bridge. And I'm going to turn it over to Janet O'Meara and Ed Singer to talk about the details.
So as Chris mentioned, this is a project out in the town of Union Bridge. It's being done for MPDS permit compliance in partnership with the town of Union Bridge. A contract was awarded to Kibler Construction earlier this year to move forward with construction in the amount of $649,000. Through the engineering process, we did do studies, borings to the best that we could, um, working with our hydrogeologists. Um, as we've progressed through construction, we have encountered areas that have required repair. Um, given the geology of the area, which is karst, we've had some sinkholes open up and have had to work with a contractor to repair those. Um, since the briefing paper was prepared, we have had four additional appear and have had to make those repairs. Because what we don't want to do is to leave these areas vulnerable to rainstorms. Um, that just kind of exacerbates the problem that's out there. So I will let Ed give a little bit more detail, um, for why we're here today.
Well, in, in addition to the, uh, to the, to the sinkholes, um, we've also encountered a, a layer of, of rock. And that's, uh, you know, also included in this briefing paper that, uh, we didn't find, we didn't find rock when we, we did the borings. I think we, we did our due diligence. Um, we'd actually bid a contingency for rock in the, uh, in the, um, when, when we bid the project out, but we didn't expect that we were going to need to use that contingency. So we didn't actually put any money in the contract initially. But as we've gotten out to, out there, it's very unpredictable when, when you're in this karst topography, um, as to what you can run into. Ran into this a lot when we were at the Health Department with putting septic systems in. You never knew if you were going to hit a pinnacle or, or, or something in these, in these limestone areas. And, uh, so we've run into this rock that we, we also need to hammer as well as fixing the sinkholes, which are necessary. Um, it's, when, once we, we get the area prepped and get the liner in, um, it, it's going to protect the area from being susceptible to further sinkholes and, and, uh, and, and moving the project forward. However, it's, it is more than the, uh, the 10% that the, um, the bureau director's allowed to approve. Uh, the, the actual cost on the sinkholes at this point in time is, it's, it's different than what's reflected in your briefing paper. Uh, it's been $47,179.35 to repair 15 sinkholes at this point. And, uh, the total increase that we'd be asking for, for your approval is $104,719.35. And we've been working with, uh, Kibler Construction, who's the contractor on this, and they've been, uh, very cooperative. Our, our staff have been out there. Zach, our geologist, has been out there, um, overseeing the, the, the repair of these sinkholes. Any, anytime there's a sinkhole that, that arises, we, we want to get it fixed so that we don't continue to have problems. But, uh, so, so that's kind of where we are at this point in time. And, uh, what, what we're essentially asking for in the, the recommendation was to originally put it $101,165.93. Uh, actually, at this point, we're at $104,719.35 when, when we're talking about repairing the 15 sinkholes and the, uh, rock excavation that, uh, would cost 57,540.
Ed, just a question. You have a bedrock, you're going to lower it and put stone on it and put the liner in it. Wouldn't it make sense to raise it two feet and put the liner right on the bedrock?
Well, the, the problem with, with that is, is that you, you have a, you have a level where this outfalls into the stream. You have to be able to get the pipe low enough in order to, uh, to have the appropriate outfall into the, into the stream without creating erosion problems.
Wouldn't that just be lower the pipe and use that bedrock to our advantage?
You have to lower the whole facility because you have, well, the, the other thing you have to do is you have to be able to, we're, we're collecting all the rainfall that's coming in from the, uh, impervious areas in, in, in the town. And, and, and those elevations have to match up with where the, where the pond is in order for, for us to get enough volume in the pond. You, you can't just raise it up because we wouldn't have, uh, you wouldn't have fall to get the water into the pond.
So basically, the stream is your zero in machinist terms, and you got to go from zero back up.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So we have to have enough fall to get the, to get the water conveyed to the pond.
So, if I may, um, so, that's the reason why we do the test pits during design, is so we understand what our constraints are. And so we understand where the bedrock is, and we can avoid that. Um, unfortunately, you can put 100 test pits out there and miss, just miss where the bedrock is, these pinnacles. And so at this point, the facility has been designed to these elevations. And with stormwater management, it's all about volumes. You need a set amount of volume. And we've constructed the outfall pipe, we've constructed most of the grading and so on. Now we're just trying to get down to that bottom elevation that hits the, um, that hits the volume we need. If we had discovered the bedrock during design, we would have adjusted the design. So an alternative could be, we could go back to redesign and so on. But now we're talking about months of redesign, changing the, the grading, changing permitting, and so on and so forth. So the issue is that we're in mid-construction right now.
How deep's the bedrock?
Uh, we have to lower it by an additional, um, two feet.
Yeah, but how, how far is the bedrock go? Do we know?
Uh, I'm not sure how much.
I don't know that we.
I, I believe the depth of the excavation, and I'd have to go back and look at the plan specifically, but I think we're, uh, approximately 14 feet below the existing grade.
Oh, okay.
I rode past there the other day on my motorcycle, and I seen that ridge. And thanks to the tour you gave me, I comprehend why the core drilling had missed it because bedrock will shift, and there's actually a ridge that sticks up. So it's not like there was any negligence on their part. It just happened to be where the drill cores were hitting missed it.
Exactly.
And those sinkholes are extremely dangerous. I was a bit nervous out there on the tour because the sides are falling in, and that prevents a real big health hazard to the contractor out there and the equipment. That's very heavy equipment sitting next, they could sink into the ground.
Yes.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve a change order for Kibler Construction incorporate an amount of $104,719.35. So I get to revise the amount.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
Second?
A motion, got a second. Any discussion on this? Appreciate the description. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's talk about a renewal of a Cisco HyperFlex subscription.
We are here requesting your approval to award a contract to Cisco HyperFlex Subscription Renewal to Digicon Corporation in the amount of $27,030.78. This is for a one-year subscription beginning this month, and the funds are within the adopted FY23 budget, and no additional funds should be necessary. And I'll turn it over to six to four, any questions you might have.
Well, the one question I have is, what does it do? So, you know, the names are great, but bottom line, it's four to six.
The Cisco HyperFlex platform is the platform that the server infrastructure for the computer aided dispatch and police records management system runs on, so it's critical for the 911 operations and the sheriff's operations. That system is reached, nearing the end of its life in the next 19 months or so, so we will be beginning the process of actually redesigning what it, what its replacement is going to look like, which is why we're looking at a one-year subscription for this support.
How long is the life?
Um, we get five to seven years, depending on the product, so.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I mean, you have a whole new system and all this other, it's just, it's just.
Technology is very expensive.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for the Cisco HyperFlex, just because I like saying that, subscription renewal to Digicon Corporation in amount of $27,030.78.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion?
What, one, if, if for some reason we get away from Keystone and get another software, because I know that there's been discussions about, would this also support that?
This what? This, um, this platform is running the Windows-based servers that the Keystone application is installed on, so as long as it's a Windows-based server application.
This is good. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now let's talk about the Intellitime Systems Annual Support.
Okay, this time we are requesting your approval to award the contract for the Intellitime System Annual Support to Intellitime Systems Corporation in the amount of $26,660. The support is funded in FY23 budget, and no additional fund should be necessary. An alternative to Charlie this time, if you have any questions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Charlie Beckhart with Technology Services. This is the routine renewal of the annual maintenance agreement with Intellitime to cover our workforce management system, known as VTI, Virtual Time Card Interface, and this maintenance agreement will cover software upgrades, support, bug fixes, maintenance, and this software is used by the entire county for time and attendance, time clocks, our advanced scheduling for our 24/7 operations, and we installed it in August of 2017.
Says ongoing implementation. Is it, how long is it going to take to, it's fully implemented?
Yeah. So VTI is fully implemented and has been since, since June of 2019. We did a staged implementation with VTI, which is the time and attendance component of our payroll HR overall project, which is what I believe you're referring to, Commissioner. So VTI, we consider to be live. It is collecting our time and attendance data, the time clocks are fully functioning, and I believe it was five different stages of bringing various aspects of the organization onboard. We started with some of the more simple, like technology services, human resources. State's Attorney's Office was in stage one. We worked our way to the more complex things, such as sheriff and detention center, very specialized needs. But, but sheriff and detention center has been onboard since June of 2019, so fully three years. So we consider the VTI component to be fully live.
I'd like to move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for Intellitime System Annual Support to Intellitime Systems Corporation in amount $26,660, is it?
Yes, it is. Second.
Yep.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion or any discussion?
Only to, to ask how VTI is working. I mean, is it, it's working really well? I mean, everybody's onboard now and rolling right along, right?
Right. That's my, that's my, that's my opinion of it. VTI has been a great help in adding efficiency in time card processing and the ability to look into some of the data that we're collecting for analytical purposes. We share, within the last eight, nine pay periods or so, as an example, we share with the sheriff and detention center some data that's specific to information that they're interested in, that they are then using for their own analytical purposes. So VTI is up and running, and I'll just toss out that as we continue to stand up the fire and EMS department, VTI, I believe, will be a huge component, which will assist them with the shift, the nature of the shift work that, that you're so familiar with. So VTI is going to be a, a great deal of help in that regard.
That's good. And it's, yeah, it, it sounds like it's user-friendly, from what I get from a lot of the folks that plug in when they're in and out and, you know, whatever, so. Good. Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. 2022 Spring Amendment to the 2019 Water and Sewer Master Plan. Linda, Mr. Price, come on down.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. We are here today for a public hearing for the spring amendment to the 2019 Carroll County Water and Sewer Master Plan. This amendment was duly advertised in the Carroll County Times as were required to by law on June 30th and July 7th. We have not received any comments on these amendments, and I don't believe there's anyone signed up for comment here today for this public hearing. So with that, do we need to call the public hearing? Does it order, Mr. Burke, or do?
Well, let's see if there is anybody.
We need to call to order first.
My microphone doesn't work.
Oh, your microphone. Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, you're working.
Uh, Mr. President, at this time, it's appropriate to take any public comments. Are there any comments here?
Any comments on the out? Nope.
On, on the phone?
Chris?
I have no comments.
Okay, no comments.
Uh, Mr. President, at this time, it's appropriate to make a motion to close the public hearing portion.
To make a motion that we close the public hearing and keep the record open for a period of 10 days.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I was going to question the 10 days, but whatever.
Nine days.
I don't know why we do that, but, I mean, that's just, if we've gotten no comments, I would say roll, but 10, whatever.
A legal requirement for the 10 days?
Um, it's just typically our practice, not in this particular case. It's just been practice within the county for our decisions.
That's fine. I mean, there might be one person watching today that might say, whoa, wait a minute, but I think it's a little bit late now for, but anyway.
I, I, I agree, but I do think that somebody may, oh, wait, what are they doing here? And maybe make a comment.
And I know them.
Well, yeah, okay. So there's that. I might know them too, as a matter of fact.
Okay.
So we will be back in two weeks for your adoption of these amendments, and then the next step is to send this to Maryland Department of the Environment. They will review and approve, and once it's approved by MDE, these changes become official.
Okay.
All righty.
And then you get to start on the next one?
Yep, that's correct.
Why don't you talk to us about the 2021 Planning Annual Report?
Yes. So with me today, I have Drew from our office, who's going to, and Tiffany Fawcett, who's going to give you the presentation on the 2022 Annual Report. The Annual Report is a report, as it says, it's prepared annually per state requirements, and it's amended and submitted to the Maryland Department of Planning. You were sent a hard copy yesterday of the report, and it's an accounting, basically, of the development pipeline, not only for the county, but also all of municipalities. We do this on their behalf, so we have one comprehensive report that's submitted. And with that, Tiffany Fawcett is going to give you the highlights of the Annual Report. It's already been submitted to the state, so this is just a courtesy to let you all know what's happened over the year of 2021 in Carroll County. So with that, I'm going to have Tiffany present to you.
Good morning.
Hi.
And Linda went over most of what these, Linda went over, I can't move that either. Linda went over a couple of these first slides already. This is, this report for development activity for the calendar year is requirement by the state. Not required is the Annual Report that Carroll County does, does incorporate development information and data that is provided by the eight municipalities, and it is all put together for one report that we present to the Maryland Department of Planning, and that was given to them, submitted on the first of the month, and it should have, development-related activities are to be consistent with the local adopted plans and should implement the 12 state planning visions. We'll start on pages two through eight. Those are the new plans and plan amendments, and include maps one through five. For new plans, there was one. Sykesville completed and adopted their 10-year update of the comprehensive plan called Vision 2030 that is available for review on their website. For plan amendments, there were several amendments to the Water and Sewer Master Plan that became effective as part of the spring 2021 amendment cycle, and those amendments pertain to the town of Manchester and the Freedom area, and those are shown on maps one through five. Pages nine through 13 have site plans and subdivisions approved and include tables one through four, as well as map six. For residential site plans and subdivisions approved, there was a total of 103 new lots approved. The county consisted of 34 of those new lots, and Westminster and Tonnietown made up the remaining 69 new lots. For non-residential site plans and subdivisions approved, there was a total of 256.15 acres approved. 152.98 of those acres were county-approved, and Westminster, Hampstead, Mount Airy, Sykesville, and Union Bridge made up the remaining 103.17 acres. Those can be seen on map six.
So this is basically what goes through Planning Commission. So these are the plans for the county portion that you would hear in our typical Planning Commission meetings that we hold monthly when they come through with subdivision and site plans.
You're saying Sykesville, not Eldersburg?
Um, if, if, can you go back up? That, that is particularly within the corporate limits of Sykesville, so not the greater Eldersburg. Well, it is the Greater Eldersburg area, but that's within the corporate limits when we say Sykesville.
So you're referring to Eldersburg?
No, we're not referring to Eldersburg. We're referring to the corporate limits of the municipality of Sykesville.
So there's been no changes into Eldersburg?
Um, we can get you that number. I don't have that split out of how many subdivisions were approved.
Right.
For Eldersburg, but we also do those numbers monthly based on use and occupancy. So that's the end of the development pipeline. This is kind of the, start, the start of the development pipeline where site plans and subdivisions are being approved. So in the county total, there were 103 new lots, and that included all of the municipalities, totaling that 105 acres. The non-residential, which is our commercial industrial in the county, were 256 new acreages. Only 152 were in the county in the balance, the 103 were split amongst these municipalities specifically.
Okay.
Although not, not included in the report, this is included in the presentation to show the approved site plans and subdivisions for residential development 10-year trend. This shows the number of lots per year over the last 10 years, including the 34 that were approved by the county. This does not include municipalities. There were, there was an uptick between 2012, 2014, but if this was extended further into the past, that would be more of an anomaly than, than what is typical. And the next slide, also not included in the report, but just a summary of what is in the report, for the 10-year trend, non-residential development, approved subdivisions and site plans, and this is in acres, for the 2021, 153 approved acres that the county had, not included the municipalities. And again, that uptick in 2014 is a bit of an anomaly, mostly attributed to one particular project.
The Freedom District, whatever they're called, the FDCA, is talking a lot lately about residential growth, and this, you know, non-stop residential growth, and we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the schools, and, you know, and you know the, the answers. This is a great slide to share with them, that this is what's happening, because they have a, a picture of something else that's just not happening. If you can reach out to them and say, you know, we understand anecdotally about the properties and the potential for the growth, but the actuality is, is this. So I would appreciate that, Linda.
Absolutely. We can do that.
Next, on pages 14 through 17, we have zoning map amendments, and that includes tables five and six, as well as maps seven and eight. Table five shows the 19 rezonings that took place in 2021. 18 of the 19 rezone properties were part of the Carroll County's by-request comprehensive rezoning that happened, that most of that work was done in 2020, but they did not become effective until January of 2021, and that's why they're on here. And one was a mixed-use zone over a property in Mount Airy, and you can see those on map For annexations, there were four. Those are shown in table six and on map eight. They included two in Manchester, one in Hampstead, and one in Sykesville. Next, pages 18 through 23 show zoning text amendments, amendments to priority funding area boundaries, changes to schools, transportation, APFO, or adequate public facility ordinances, and park facilities, and that includes table seven. For zoning text amendments on pages 18 through 19, these are the revisions to local ordinances affecting future development. In the county, there was, there were ordinances for solar on ag remaining portions and self-storage in I-1 of sustainable communities.
And that was the allowance that you did to allow that?
Okay. For Hampstead, the ordinances and amendments were for changes to zoning definitions, redistricted, restricted, and, thank you, industrial zoning text, historic district zoning text, general business text, and text concerning accessory use, buildings, and structures. In Mount Airy, there was Development Rights and Responsibility Agreement amendments, adequate facilities within the MXG, or Mixed Use District. Westminster had amendments for solar energy facility use in, as permitted or special exception, added definition of satellite automobile storage, and allowed as special exception use, and allowed for one-year extension to an approved site plan. There were no changes to the priority funding area boundaries, no, no new schools or additions. In table seven, you'll see the changes to roadway network were primarily system maintenance and local in nature, and Westminster amended the water and sewer allocation policy and master distribution chart as part of their adequate public facilities ordinance. There are several changes to park facilities, and those can be found on pages 21 through 23, as listed and also as images from above. The county had completed an 18-acre expansion of Deer Park, the majority of Westminster Memorial Park, and added another soft launch in detour. In cooperation with Union Bridge, the county also completed a new kayak soft launch at Little Pipe Creek. New Windsor constructed 201 Main Street Park. Sykesville constructed their new splash pad at Millard Cooper Park, and Westminster upgraded to home a farm, Boulder Park, with a new playground. On pages 31 through 32 are the building permits issued, and that also includes table 16 and map 10. There were a total of 597 building permits issued in 2021, and table 16 shows the residential and non-residential building permits issued by inside and outside the priority funding areas and inside and outside the growth areas. Of the 597 total, 68.3% were residential and inside the priority funding areas, and 7.7% was non-residential and inside the priority funding areas. And the growth area numbers reflect those very similarly.
So the first step is the site plans. That's the first part of the development pipeline. This is kind of like the, the second part, where the building permits are. This is kind of like the second part, where the building permits are being issued. So, this is when you see kind of the construction start. Then the final part of that, and she'll get into, is the use and occupancy permits, and that's who's taken possession of a unit.
And the 595, I do believe, does include improvements as well. 97, sorry about that. And then map 10 will show you the locations of those building permits issued. Pages 33 through 35 are for the new use and occupancy certificates issued. We refer to those as UNOs. Tables 17 and 18 are included, as well as map 11. There's a total of 526 use and occupancy certificates issued in 2021. Table 18 shows the new residential and non-residential use and occupancy certificates issued inside and outside the priority funding areas, and inside and outside the growth areas. Of the 526 UNO certificates issued, 74.5% of them were in residential and inside the priority funding areas, and 1.9% of them were non-residential and inside the priority funding areas. And again, the growth area numbers reflect very similar numbers. And you can see those on map 11 on page 35. And just, this was a little side note, just when I was going through these and I was looking at the maps, that's 526, and it doesn't look, when you're looking at that, like there's 526 dots, nor does it seem to me like 74% are in the priority funding areas when we look at it. So, I just made this little slide here, which has a little bump out that'll show, like, there's 155 in Tawnytown, and when we reflect that on a map, a lot of them end up very clustered and on top of each other. So, it's, just to keep that in mind when looking at those maps. And again, we have a 10-year trend. This one's showing residential use and occupancy certificates countywide. This year, there was that uptick, and that, I know with that 155 that was in Tawnytown, that could be reflective of that. Typically, though, over the years, it's pretty, pretty steady there.
You've been holding steady, around that 300 mark, give or take, but as Tiffany said, last year, we had, had that uptick. And right now, I think for our 2022 numbers, we're still around that 300 mark as well. So, we don't anticipate that 484 or higher trend continuing. We expect to be where we've been in the past decade with around 300 or so.
And also with non-residential use and occupancy certificates countywide with the 10-year trend, you'll see the 10 that are reflected there, and this does include municipalities. Pages 37 through 41, we have the development capacity analysis. We also refer to that as the Building Land Inventory, or BLI. It's also including tables 20 through 24, and maps 12 through 13. For existing and potential developable, developable residential lots, we have a total of 65,718 existing units, with 55% of the, of the existing units inside the priority funding areas, and 45% of them being outside the priority funding areas. For potential lots, or future possible developable residential lots, there's a total of 19,443 lots.
So, this is, I'm sorry, do you mind if I interject? This is a marked departure from where we've been in the past with the buildable land inventory. And if you see on page 37, we describe why that is. And I worked with Land and Resource Management's GIS staff, who calculates buildable land inventory for us. They run a program that looks at each individual parcel. It looks at what its policy is, so what the zoning is, what the infrastructure is, whether it has water and sewer infrastructure, and looks at its environmental constraints, whether there's steep slopes, there's different recharge easements, wetlands, et cetera. We can't do certain things like perkability and things like that, but we can take the very high-level items. And typically, per parcel, that's around a 20 to 30% reduction of the use of the property. This changed dramatically because some of the policies that we have in play were not fully implemented within this model. For instance, septic tiers was not being taken into consideration that if something is not on water and sewer, you can't achieve the allowable zoning. So, we were overestimating the amount of parcels that had development potential to its maximum. So, with this, we reviewed that. We've reviewed other policies and made those adjustments. So, we believe this is a more accurate categorization of how much, how many more building potential we have than, than before. So, it was a reduction, I think we were around 26,000 or so before, and we're now more around that 19,000 mark. This even included for an increase in residential units that were allowed, because we allowed some commercial districts to have residential as part of that C1, C2, C3 zoning change. And also, it reformulated the calculation for age-restricted before that had a different calculation. Our new calculation, based on the rezoning changes and the text amendment that we had just completed this past year, is maximizing that at three and a half dwelling units per acre. So, that's all reflected in these new calculations. So, that, the combination of some increase and decrease led to an overall decrease in the amount of building potential by five or 6,000 units in the county.
Then existing and potential developable non-residential acreage on pages 40 through 41 show that existing acreage is a total of 539 acres. 81% of that existing acreage is inside the priority funding areas, and 19% is outside. For potential acreage or possible future developable non-residential acreage, there's a total of 3,514 acres. 87% of that potential acreage is inside the priority funding areas, and 13% of it is outside. For pages 42 through 43, it's the agricultural land preservation, including tables 25 and 26, as well as map 14. In 2021, there was 2,384 acres, including 22 farms preserved for agricultural land. Since 1979, a total of 76,545 acres of land have been preserved for agricultural use. Last year, or in fiscal year 2021, $7,869,916 was committed to agricultural preservation, and 66% of that was county, county funds. Map 14 shows all of the preserve, the land preservation easements, including the ones for 2021, are in the colors.
So, one interesting thing to note with this, and I apologize for having a slide regarding this, but one thing that's interesting to note is that we are outpacing development with ag preservation by 10 times the amount. We're, we were developing around 100 and some acres a year of residential... I'm sorry. Where's the actual development? That's the access... Yeah, the use and occupancy. Well, anyway, we can, we had those numbers, and we did talk to Planning Commission about that, but just so you know, we are outpacing development dramatically with our preservation efforts in Carroll County. So, and that's, you know, one of the premises of ag pres is to kind of keep pace with that development. So, I just wanted to make you all aware of that fact. And so, are there any other questions?
Again, that's a very good, clear message to share with those that believe we are overdeveloping in areas that, you know, it's difficult because there is a balance, and we've committed ourselves to that balance with preserving agriculture property. But there's this perception that we're still overdeveloping, and we don't have the infrastructure to meet the needs of the developments, so.
In your plan, can you achieve the $100,000, $100,000-acre preservation land?
Which plan? The master?
Any of it. I mean, can, can that be achieved in the next X amount of years?
I mean, I believe we have the acreage. I can't speak to that because I'm not in the ag pres program. I would say, from my understanding, we do have the land to achieve the 100,000-acre goal, but this doesn't really get it. That just tells you what's preserved now, and then what the potential is for future development.
Okay.
Is there a reason Westminster didn't send their approval in?
Yes, the, the change in the BLI numbers took a little longer than expected, and Westminster was one of two of the municipalities that wanted to approve the entire report, as opposed to just their own information that they were sending us. So, they had to wait until after the report was completed, and then when we're working with Planning Commission timeframes, when they meet. So, they're going to go ahead, and that's supposed to be on their agenda for this month to sign off on that, and then we'll send that to Maryland Department of Planning as well.
You don't anticipate any concerns there? It's just a matter of timing?
I know, and again, the numbers from the municipalities come from the municipalities. This is their reporting. This is the forms they fill out. So, typically, the processes, they go through it, they go through it with their planning commissions, they send it to us, and we package it as one annual report from the county, which I think is nice because it helps us even understand, since we are eight municipalities that have sovereign land use authority from the county, to know the bigger picture of what's happening.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate map 14, the land preservation easement map, because I think it very clearly shows how important the municipal designated growth areas are in our overall game plan to preserve the rural countryside. So, it's a nice balance of how we need to pull this off. But so often, we hear people who live in a designated growth area complain they moved to Carroll County for the rural countryside, but they actually moved into an area of municipal water and sewer. And I just ask for to understand, people out there, how this plan is unfolding, if they get a chance to go to the website and see this and comprehend and understand that we do have an overall view and plan in place, and this is part of it. So, thanks for all your work and effort on this.
Absolutely, and I think that's why we've been so successful in preserving so much, Lena, is because since 1964, even prior to the ag preservation programs, Carroll County's stuck to essentially those growth area boundaries for the majority of its development, and then preserving the rest for agricultural purposes.
Thank you. You guys do a wonderful job. It's a tough position you have, because there's always people who are discontent about what unfolds, but there is rhyme and reason to all of this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thanks. Let's talk about the 2014 Master Plan Mid-Cycle Review.
Yes, so, we have to do a report annually, obviously, that's sent to the state of Maryland, Maryland Department of Planning. The other legal requirement that we had is, within a plan's 10-year life cycle, the state asks us to prepare a mid-cycle review to see what implementation efforts have occurred, because the idea is to not have these plans sit on a shelf. They're actually to be utilized, and not just, you know, paper-taking up space. So, we do put our plans to good use, and as Drew from our department is going to show you, we have done a ton of work, and we, not just Planning Department, but collectively, the Board of County Commissioners, the Planning Commission, planning staff, have really worked hard over these last several years to actually implement this master plan, and it's, I think, evident in the information that Drew's going to share with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President and Commission members. Today, I'll be briefing you, as Ms. Eisenberg mentioned, on the mid-cycle review of the 2014 Carroll County Master Plan. The purpose of the mid-cycle review. State law requires a narrative on the master plan's implementation status at least once in the annual report. This information that will be sent to the Maryland Department of Planning is included in your briefing packet. What are the county's development trends? The information on the slide depicts the amount of residential subdivision lots, commercial and subdivision, commercial and industrial subdivisions, and commercial and industrial acres, and also use and occupancy permits between the years 2015 and 2021. Please note that the numbers in this chart do not, do not include the incorporated part of Carroll County, which would be the municipalities.
And that's because we're only reporting for the county's master plan, not everything else.
As you can see from the, the numbers fluctuate greatly in the charts, except for use and occupancy permits for unincorporated Carroll County, which are steadily decreasing. On the contrary, the use and occupancy permits for incorporated Carroll County are increasing and attributed to directing new growth to the priority funding areas. Overall, use and occupancy permits in the county for both incorporated and unincorporated Carroll County have been steadily increasing since 2018. What are our, sorry, what are our comprehensive plan implementation tools? Ordinance number 202101 was rezoning 27 parcels to commercial and industrial unemployment campus, which was part of the county's by-request comprehensive rezoning initiative, and ordinance number 202102 was rezoning one parcel, and they were both adopted on December 21st, sorry, January 21st, 2021.
Now, is it effort that you all went through with the commercial? Yeah, okay.
What are the significant changes to the zoning ordinance? Or, for ordinance 202203 was adopted in December of 2021 to revise the following sections under zoning regulations, non-conforming uses, distance requirements, principal dwellings, temporary and seasonal use requirements, communications towers, agricultural districts, conservation district, the R40,000, 20,000, 10,000, and R7,500 residential district, residential districts regulation of principal, uh, principal uses, residential districts regulation of accessory uses, residential districts bulk requirements, commercial-industrial, employment campus districts, regulations of principal use, mineral resource overlay, use off-the-premise signs, exemptions and modifications, zoning certificates, Board of Zoning Appeals, mobile homes, temporary and seasonal uses, and retirement villages. Ordinance number 202204 was adopted in December of 2021 to revise subdivision control and cluster subdivision under zoning regulations. What are the state and federal laws that have impeded the implementation of our master plan? The greatest challenge continues to be the cost of implementation related to the Chesapeake, the total daily maximum loading of the Chesapeake Bay and the state's watershed improvement program. Additionally, the locating new water resources continues to be a challenge for new growth in the county's municipalities.
Again, these are all questions that are being asked in this, so he's just going through the litany of questions that we had to report on for this mid-cycle.
What are future land use challenges? There's a limited amount in the county, a little, limited amount of land in the county, including the municipalities with access to water and sewer infrastructure. It makes it extremely difficult to continue to develop and redevelop in our priority funding areas, municipalities and growth areas. Carroll County is also limited in its ability to increase densities or intensities in the county's growth areas located in the eastern portion of the county because of the regional water shed agreement with the Baltimore area's reservoirs. One of the other questions was the summary. Were there any summaries, or sorry, were there any updates to your master plan? 2019, there was an update. Just briefly go through the update. For the general, boundaries of all maps were adjusted as a result of the contraction of the designated growth area boundaries in the 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. Also, updated maps to reflect municipal growth area annexations and master plan updates in Hampstead, Manchester, Westminster, Tawnytown, and Mount Airy. Whoops. For transportation, updated tables and maps for planned roads and improvements to reflect road segments that have been removed from the plan because of viability of future connections. These road segments include Johnsville Road Extended, Conan Doyle Way Extended, Lee Lane Extended, Macbeth Way, Mall Ring Road, Monroe Avenue between Bennett Road and Maryland 32. Roads that have been completed has been the Hampstead Streetscape Project, Gorsuch Road, Arthur Peck Drive, Brandy Avenue to Mycroft Street Connection, Jenna Eve Drive Extended, Creider's Church Road realignment. Roads that have been partially completed include Arnold Road realignment and improvements, and also Chandler Drive. An unnamed road from Cleesmill, Cleesmill to Ronsdale has been added, and Georgetown Boulevard Extended was changed. Lastly, for chapter seven, enhanced recommendations were added referencing the, by referencing the transportation, master plan, and development review process. For chapter 16, land use and growth management, update of the tech... For Chapter 16, land use and growth management, update of the text and table statistics as a result of contraction of the designated growth area boundaries in the Freedom Area. Updated text and tables as a result of the removal of very low-density designation. Updated future land use map to reflect the updated land use designation of the employment campus or Maryland 97 south of Westminster to revert back to the 2,000 future land use and current zoning per the property owner and the economic development study, saying that this site is no longer feasible for an employment campus. Also, the re-designated of Longview Farm for commercial to agriculture. With the elimination of the very low-density designation, or, oh, sorry, with the elimination of the very low-density designation in the Freedom Plan, reverted very low-density, mapped areas back to their 2,000 land use designation or most recent zoning. And additionally, corrected the designation of properties on Twin Arch Road from commercial high to industrial heavy. And lastly, added a new section regarding municipal growth areas to clarify the policy regarding development in the municipal growth areas. For existing and future land use definitions, updated land use definitions to be consistent with the 2018 Freedom Community Comprehensive Plan. And for generalized future land uses, added a map that shows the future land use in all areas of the county. Additionally, as Linda mentioned, this has been the most implemented master plan that the county has had since the moment this plan was adopted. County staff, the U.S. Board of County Commissioners, and the County Planning and Zoning Commission started implementation efforts. Already 11 strategies have completed, have been completed, and 26 are currently ongoing. Thank you, Commissioners. If you have any questions, I am here. Thank you.
Very efficient.
Very good.
That's all we have for you today. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. A lot of really good information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Nice tie.
Thank you.
Very well.
Let's talk about GIS assistance. Mission Critical Partners. Hey, Scott.
With Mayor Mr. Jack Brown, our, the county's emergency communications manager. We are here today, as you said, Commissioner, to speak to a proposal to acquire GIS assistance in service from a firm known as Mission Critical Partners, or they're commonly known as MCP, which would be funded 100% by monies provided by the Maryland 911 Board. So what we're speaking here today would have zero cost to the county. It would require, though, the Commissioners to accept the funding for us to proceed. With that, what I'd like to do is ask Mr. Brown to just give you an overview of what this proposed service would entail. I'll simply say that the impetus for the request was an unexpected vacancy of some in-house capabilities. We basically lost our GIS analyst in our, in our department that was critical to the transition to Next Gen 911. And what Mr. Brown will explain is how we're proposing to address that.
Okay.
Good morning. As Director Campbell mentioned, we lost our GIS person within the Department of Public Safety. Several months ago, we were before you to take on the Next Gen 911 initiative, which is all based upon GIS. With the departure of our GIS person, it became imperative that we, that we bring this group on to continue that work so we're not delayed. Currently, we're scheduled to transition to the Next Gen Core Services in October. And to keep on that schedule, Mission Critical will take on a large part of the GIS work during the rest of this project.
And if I could please add one thing, Commissioners. We are aggressively trying to fill this vacancy to the point that we have interviews this afternoon and tomorrow, but the reality is, we could have a, we could find the fact that we have a candidate that we could bring onboard in a few weeks. But because of the nature of this work and how advanced it already is, Mission Critical Partners is or are already familiar with the project, so they can hit the ground running, for lack of a better description. Our new employees simply would not have that option.
In this project, there's three, there's three specific tasks that they identified. The one, Task 1 is Next Gen, as in that GIS support services. That is where the work will come to continue that project. We're also contracted with Mission Critical as project management for that project. So this will be their GIS team working in conjunction with their project management team to keep this project moving and make sure that we're moving in the right direction. The Task 2 is administrative support. That'll help with some of the internal county-related items that we need to take care of and as well, working with the new person that may be selected through this selection process that we're going. And the third task is support services. That's just, that's an overall umbrella to do other things that we may, that we may require of them. This is a six-month contract. I did go before the 911 Board, the Maryland 911 Board, and this project has been approved by the Maryland 911 Board.
So in a nutshell, Commissioners, we're here to ask you to please accept $78,508 of funding offered by the Maryland 911 Board to pay 100% the cost of the six-month service agreement with Mission Critical Partners, as Mr. Brown has explained.
Very much.
I appreciate you continuing to bust on the 911 Board for more funding, Jack. Nicely done.
Thank you, sir.
Because there's a lot, there's a lot out there that they can provide funding for that we need to really take advantage of. So well done on that.
We look at every opportunity that presents.
I know. So I move that we accept the $78,508 of funding offered by the Board and authorize Director of Public Safety execute the proposed agreement with MCP to include approving payment of the bills.
Second. Got a motion second. Any discussion on this? Again, great work, gentlemen.
Would there be an opportunity for the new folk, the new guy, person, to work hand-in-hand with MCP, maybe, for kind of training?
That's part of the intent, Commissioner, that there would be a handoff.
That was part of the support services task. So there'll be, there'll be, some of this is, there might be some opportunity for some one-site work from this contract, so that would be where all that comes in.
Yeah, that's a huge advantage because that'll help that individual get a handle on what we're looking for, too, so.
Even though we're getting a GIS individual, there's nuances with 911 routing, emergency service zones, those types of things that if they don't have that knowledge, this is where that would come in.
Good, okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay, let's talk about Chapter 170, Construction Codes, Board of Building Code Appeals, Sprinkler Waiver Sista Request.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
It's still morning, yes.
Yeah. So come here today, the Bureau of Permits and Inspections has received a request to admit sprinklers in an addition in a total house renovation located at 221 Crowe Mill Road. The owner, Mr. Jonas Zook, has made this request due to the property not being connected to electric utility. The state does allow such, the bureaus to adopt, with the exception if the house is not connected to a power grid. So however, it is not in our ordinance, so I have to deny that request.
You're the, you're the bad guy right now. You know that, right?
Have we, have we done this before?
We have. We've done this almost identical situation once, and we've done two new houses. We've made the exception.
So we've made exceptions to this already?
Yes.
So precedence has been set.
Again, currently, we have nothing in the ordinance saying that. So, which brings me here again.
It's in the state of Maryland that we can.
The state allows for new residences not connected to the power grid. This is specifically, the dwelling or the addition and the renovation is also in our 170 as well, so. There's two requirements here, I guess.
I've got a fundamental question. If we've made exceptions prior to this, and there's a trend of making exceptions and presences, should we make an adjustment to the ordinance or leave the ordinance as is, recognizing that we just go case by case? And that's not for you necessarily, but that's for my colleagues.
I think that when we started making these appeals or granting these appeals, we said we're going to do it on a case-by-case basis, so they would have to come before us. So we see exactly what was being suggested before it was granted.
Yeah, I think it's necessary to continue case by case. I don't want to blanket this because you guys know how I feel about sprinklers, so.
You know how I feel about them.
Let me explain how I feel now.
That's why I'm in between you two.
But I would assume, Mike, that you've had conversation, Mr. Zook, you're here, and thank you for coming in today, conversations about other safety measures as a result of not having sprinkler protection within the dwelling. Because I know we've done this a couple times.
Yeah, correct. We would, it would require that all bedrooms be equipped with an emergency egress window, including the existing house. They would have to enlarge any bedroom in there. It's going to have to meet all means of egress in the dwelling. It's going to have to have the 10-year smoke and carbon monoxide throughout, you know, communicating technology. So it doesn't, it's not going to eliminate anything else. And the, I guess, the plot, the thing that would be a little different in this situation is we're going to make the existing house, if there's a bedroom in that, we're going to make them enlarge that window. All other life safety features would be in place.
Is this a two-story?
It is a two-story.
Okay.
Okay.
Means of egress out of that second floor beyond the rescue windows. One stairwell up, or how, how's that?
Uh, one stairwell up through and an emergency egress window out of any bedroom.
Fire extinguishers?
Uh, we did not, the residential code does not address fire extinguishers.
I know it doesn't, but I'm suggesting that perhaps.
I don't believe we did that on the other one. I don't believe that came up, but it may have. And I believe the owner did voluntarily immediately agree that they said, yeah, I'll provide fire extinguishers.
He did say he'd provide fire extinguishers.
Yeah, I believe that is correct, yes.
Thanks for making that point.
Well, Mr. Zook is here, and this is his appeal. Mr. Zook, do you want, do you want to say anything to the board in support of your appeal, especially in light of the questions that were asked?
You need to come up to the mic.
Well, I just want to thank you to consider my appeal. Yeah, otherwise, I don't have a whole lot to say.
Well, you've heard the comments about the windows, and is that something you're willing to do?
Yes, I think that's in, it's on the blueprint of the, of the new addition.
And the question about the fire extinguishers?
That's something that we can also do. Are you thinking one per level?
Yeah, and if the hallway's long, I think the one, Mike, refresh my memory, the one on Humbert Schoolhouse, I think we had him put one on each end of the hallway or something.
Um, that one was the new house, the one you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Broadband.
That's right.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. Well, I don't want a fire extinguisher hanging every five feet, but I think within reason, common sense here, Mr. Zook, would be good. At least one on each level, I believe, that's within a reasonable travel distance to get to would be really important.
Yeah, good.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to make the motion that, that the Board of County Commissioners grant the appeal and exempt the applicant from installing residential sprinklers under permit RA 220965. Second.
Got a motion second. Any further discussion? See in here, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have a basic blanket on this for houses that don't have electric. It meets the same requirements. I mean, it's, it's going to happen more than once in.
It's an extra step that we're doing here, but, you know.
I think it's an important extra step to put eyes on the folks that are attempting to do it, to, you know, to just express some of these concerns.
We have a blanket policy the other way.
Well, I just think it's.
Sounds like an open admin discussion. Okay, let's move on. Design of Headquarters Facility for the Carroll County Sheriff's Department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're here today to request your approval to continue the architectural and civil engineering design with Mann's Woodward Studios for a new headquarters facility for the Carroll County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $2,562,300. In November of 2015, a request for proposals was issued, solicitation process was issued, and we received 15 proposals. Of those 15, three were shortlisted, in which Mann's Woodward Studios was awarded, was the highest-ranked firm and was awarded the contract to begin the design work of the new facility. It was determined after they began looking at it that the location for the renovation was not conducive to the needs of the Sheriff's Department, and a series of locations were taken into consideration with Mann Woodward Studios preparing the design work. For various reasons, the project was put on hold until 2022, and the intention is to move forward with the design engineering of the headquarters facility located on Ralph Street within the Greenwood Avenue complex. We feel that moving forward with Mann's Woodward Studios is under, who is under contract and has previous working knowledge of the project, has prepared a needs assessment based on the agency's requirements, is in the best interest of the county. I'm going to turn it over to John and Eric for.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning. To just further emphasize prior comments, the Bureau of Building Construction will be managing this project moving forward. As Kerry said, the building's located on what's known as the Greenwood Avenue complex and would say that the, the fee that we are requesting approval of is about 9% of total construction cost, which is less than our budget, and it's actually less than what we use for estimated CIP design and engineering fees, which ranges between 13 to 15%. Be happy to answer any further questions that you might have.
I like that last part.
So this is already in the budget. We've already basically approved. We're just awarding the contract to this company.
Correct.
I mean, it seems like, like I'll make the motion, the Board of Commissioners, award the contract for the design of Headquarters Facility for the Carroll County Sheriff's Department to Mann's Woodward Studios in the amount of $2,565,300.
I will second that.
$2,000, sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. Say that one more time.
I will second that.
Okay. Got a motion second. Any discussion?
I just want to state that considering our sheriff is headquartered in a building that was built, I believe, in 1838, this is long, long overdue, too.
And we hope this one lasts just as long.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time.
Thank you for all your work on this. This means a lot to the community and our deputies.
FY23 Sampling, Testing, and Reporting Services for the Hampstead Waste Water Treatment Plant.
Good morning, gentlemen.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for affluent sampling, laboratory testing, and reporting services for the Hampstead Waste Water Treatment Plant to Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of $40,725.90. Maryland Environmental Service is a current approved term contractor, and this proposed work is within the adopted budget. No additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, as Kerry just said, this request is for the continuation of the work that has been performed by Maryland Environmental Service for the sampling, testing, and reporting services for the Hampstead Waste Water Treatment Plant and affluent discharges into both piney run and deep run. These services were initiated in 2020 as the Hampstead Plan transitioned into the more complicated ENR treatment process and reporting requirements. I do want to point out a minor typo on the briefing paper. Under background, the year 2019 should actually be year 2020. So I do apologize for that. I do apologize for that.
I thought so.
The Maryland Environmental Services does, does provide similar services for dozens of other water and wastewater treatment plants in jurisdictions throughout the state of Maryland, including our own Freedom Water Treatment Plant and the state of Maryland's Freedom Wastewater Treatment Plant. MES has dedicated staff for these services and is very familiar with the Maryland Department of the Environment's mandated testing and reporting requirements. MES will ensure that all testing parameters and reporting tasks meet or exceed these, these requirements. The scope of work also includes continued MES assistance with the renewal of the plant's MDE discharge permit. The application for the, for the permit renewal has been made, and we do expect that there will be complications and challenges for us to work through with respect to the ENR treatment aspects, as well as the dual discharge points to both piney run and deep run. MES assistance with these overall services will allow plant staff to focus fully on the operation of our, of our facility, and this is even more critical now, as we are one person short on the overall five-person staff. Any questions for me?
Yeah, they were already doing it, is what they've been doing, so. I move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for affluent sampling, laboratory testing, reporting services for the Hampstead Wastewater Treatment Plant to Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of forty-seven thousand, forty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cent, no.
Forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Forty thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. What did I say?
Forty-seven.
You said exactly what you just said. Okay. You did say forty thousand seven hundred...
Forty-seven thousand.
Oh, okay. Forty thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cents.
Don't give him a seven thousand dollar win.
Okay. That was close.
I have a motion in a second for forty thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety cents. Okay. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, let's talk about Sykesville, or Freedom, excuse me, Freedom District Water Treatment Plant.
The Office of Procurement and Cooperation with the Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award a contract for water sampling, laboratory testing, and reporting services for the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant to Maryland Environmental Service in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Maryland Environmental Service is one of our approved term contractors, and the proposed work is within the, in the adopted budget. No additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, transitioning now to, to the water treatment plant, this is a continuation for, for the same, same reporting, sampling, testing, and reporting services that has been done since, since twenty-nineteen. And, and as you have heard me state in previous item, this similar work is done for numerous other jurisdictions and plants throughout the state by, by Maryland Environmental Services. MES is very familiar with the, the Maryland Department of the Environment's mandated testing and reporting requirements, and, and have done an excellent job for us in years past. Freedom Water Plant staff interact with MES staff on a routine basis and are kept apprised of all sampling and testing, test results, and any issues that may pop up. There have been very, very minor issues in years past. Continued MES support with these services will allow staff to focus on the, on the day-to-day operational challenges associated with the plant, and, and our water plant is also currently one person short of the overall nine-person staff.
Why is it so much cheaper in Freedom than Hampstead?
The, the testing requirements are, are much less for water treatment as compared to the, the wastewater aspects, believe it or not, which is kind of somewhat surprising based on...
Think it'd be the other way around.
Not in there.
I'm glad it's sampling and testing, not tasting.
Thank you.
I'd pass on that tour.
This one you'd be okay with. The last one you wouldn't agree with.
Oh, the first one, no.
I move the Board of Commissioners award a contract for water sampling, laboratory testing, and reporting services for the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant to MES in the amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars fifty-five cents.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seen here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Chris, are there any callers?
Oh, okay. I have no callers on the line.
Okay. Open admin, anything we want to talk about for open admin? Come on up.
You're the next contestant.
Okay, let's go over agendas. Monday, July eighteenth, we have nothing scheduled. July nineteenth, there's a planning commission meeting in, at nine AM, Commissioner Wance in the Reagan Room, and then Veterans Advisory Meeting, Commissioner Weaver, you will be attending, I will not. Wednesday, July twentieth, Chesapeake Connect twenty-twenty-two, and, oh, I see, in Detroit, Commissioner Wance, and Robert, you're also going to be attending that as well. And then you'll be going through Thursday.
Friday.
Friday.
Going through Friday, I apologize, our Chief Administrator and Commissioner Wance. On Thursday, we will have session at zero-nine. Approval of FY twenty-three Town-County Agreement, what, focused on Westminster, janitorial cleaning supplies and related products. You sure you want to miss that?
I know, I'm...
Okay.
I'm rethinking.
I'll cancel.
Detroit.
The excavator might have me.
Janitorial, purchase of one excavator, pipe replacement, Sam's Creek Road at Buffalo Road, energy management control services, and a purchase of another excavator.
So there's two excavators?
That's not right. That's my error.
Oh, okay, well, then I'm good.
It was two.
There was two.
That was a deal breaker.
I'll be fine.
So there's only one excavator that's going to be, has to be purchased.
Yeah, I'd be here for two.
Board of Education meeting, Commissioner Frazier will be attending at five PM, and a walk in the park at Freedom Park, Commissioner Boucher will be attending at six PM.
I'd like to go to walk in the park if I get out of Board of Education at six. But that won't happen, so.
It's scheduled through till nine or ten o'clock, so.
Friday, Commissioner Wance will still be with Commissioner, or with Administrator Wyndham in Detroit. Saturday at six forty-five, the Baltimore Symphony Orchestra will be performing at the Carroll Community College. I believe it's a free concert to all. It's an outdoor concert. Commissioner Frazier, Wance, Weaver, and I will be attending. And podcast will be Commissioner Wance that morning on July twenty-fourth.
Huh? You playing with the BSO?
Yeah.
Nah, they called, and I'm just, I'm really, I'll be in Detroit, so...
You're booked up.
I would, you know, wouldn't be able to practice right up till the last...
Okay, the following week, July twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, we have nothing scheduled. Twenty-seventh, Commission on Aging and Disabilities, you'll be attending or participating at ten o'clock. Thursday, the twenty-eighth, we'll have open session, and right now, we have Carroll County Code of Public Local Laws and Orange's Chapter Thirty-Six Personnel Policies that is scheduled, and we'll see if anything adds to that.
I'm going to say I'm not going to be here on twenty-eighth.
You'll be missed.
We're all celebrate.
The same.
I think that one has to be there because of...
Yeah, that has to go forward. I didn't know you were...
No.
Just a public hearing.
Yeah.
You can hear those comments later on.
So that's a legal requirement, I think, right?
Are you going to Detroit?
It's been advertised as the twenty-eighth, so we can't change it.
Oh, you going to Detroit?
Okay. No. No. Until really interrupted, I'll continue Friday, twenty-ninth, we have nothing. Saturday, thirtieth, we have nothing. And thirty-first, I'm looking forward to Commissioner Weaver's podcast. Is there anything more for the good of the group?
I'll switch.
Oh.
Well, I don't, I want to compliment Commissioner Ralstein on moving proficiently through a very aggressive budget this morning. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Think about it.
Okay.
Take next week, I'll take the week after, just saying.
Anything for the good of the group? I don't believe we have anything closed, or, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any further discussion? Seen here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Yeah.